Thank you. Call to order, our local comprehensive planning committee meeting for, what is today? August 5th. Call to order. Joyce will be here shortly. I'll get this thing running and kicked off. Appreciate all the community involvement, everybody here today. It's nice seeing everybody's shining faces late on a Tuesday, so thank you. Yeah, let's do a roll call here. Do we have anybody online? Nope. Great. All right. You want to kick it off?
David Spitz.
Garrett Kern.
Barbara Nickerson.
Oh, and one more. Brian, just come on down here and say, Brian.
Brian.
Present. That's Brian Sheldon, present. So we are called to order. The first thing on the agenda is review and approve meeting minutes for July 1st, 2025, because we're not dispersed yet, so there's none to approve, so we can essentially push that. I saw we had one on, Lisa Schultz, not part of the team, so we're good. Just want to say, appreciate everybody coming tonight. Part of what we're doing today is just walking through the high-level overview of the local comprehensive plan. This is probably two and a half, maybe even three years in the making. Yeah, I had two. Yeah, 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 I had two kids. I did the math again. I had two kids during that time. So I had one before, when I got selected. Yeah, my wife did, I didn't. But I was around, you know, I supported.
That's good.
As a good husband.
You were involved.
I was involved, yeah. As little as much as, however, but we appreciate everybody being here tonight. Part of the goal tonight is not just walk you through the plan, but also get some participation, some Q and A, and get some feedback, because there's things in here that we feel like we thought of and we ironed out, but as we continue to evolve this and continue to go down this journey, we learn more and more by involving the rest of the community and the rest of the committees and groups that we work with. So no question or thought is, it's welcome, let's just say. And so Joyce McIntyre will be here shortly to walk through it, but if, Matt, if we could pull up the presentation, I can kind of get going on maybe the overview. All right, now I have control, correct?
Yes.
Let's see if I can get this to work. Awesome. So some of you guys might already know this, guys and gals. What is the LCP? What is the Local Comprehensive Plan? Essentially, it's a living, breathing document. It's a tool to identify the future growth and the resource protection needs of the town. Part of this is, obviously, it's important to collaborate with not just the committees and the groups and the constituents of the town, but also start to align to the greater region itself in the Cape Cod Commission, who helps certify this plan. And so the end of it, right, one of the biggest reasons we do it is it helps enable funding mechanisms for the town to move forward, both federal and state level. And so to get this thing certified and to get it through the select board and to get everybody on the same page, it requires a lot of, I think, a lot of legwork and a lot of socialization, but it's worth it. And as you, as you guys may or may not know, I think the last plan was done in, what year was it? Was it 2011? 2011. So we are behind. This should be every 10 years. And I don't think anybody here thought it was going to be a three-year-plus process, but again, it is one of those ones where I came in from a private sector job and I was like, no, this will be done in a couple months, we'll be good. I'm learning quite, quite quickly that that is not how town government works, and it was eye-opening but also rewarding experience. So as we go through it, you know, if there's things that you guys want to stop and ask questions, we definitely welcome it. Part of the LCP is to create a vision statement and a growth policy. We know that growth in the town is one of those things that everybody is keen on focusing on. The state has goals, the town and the local constituents have their own goals, and we need to balance those to make sure we're enabling the right growth in the right areas and promoting those, those things as we need to. We actually look at it and take inventory and analysis of all the key issues. So we've done a bunch of visioning exercises, we've done community outreach, we've done surveys, and this team has kind of synthesized those surveys with tie-in bond to ultimately break it down into some key areas, and we'll go through those key areas, and then come up with goals, objections, objectives, actions to meet future community needs. Now, this is like, probably one of the harder things to do, because we are an advisory committee. We do not have the say in what happens. All we can do is build the plan, and the select board, and the town employers are the ones who are actually going to execute and build on that plan. And so it's, it's very important to understand that. We give as much as we can a clear and concise roadmap, but there are things that are outside of our purview that we cannot control and we are beholden to, but we do our best to, one, the difference between the plans of the past and the plans now is we built in somewhat, what are we calling it? What are we calling? Implementation plan. Don't use the word enforcement or governance, nobody likes that. But if, by putting in an implementation plan in, we're actually allowing our, our townspeople and our constituents to hold people's feet to the fire and say, hey, this is what you guys agreed upon. How do we measure up upon that versus the plan itself? And how do we keep moving the ball forward based on what was important to the town back in 2023, 2024, and 2025? And maybe what needs to be adjusted for the future as things unravel. Another piece was the overall project goal consistency with the 2018 Cape Cod Regional Policy Plan. So this is taking in, again, with the Cape Cod Commission's blessing and certification, this is looking at the Cape as a whole and what we need to do for climate resiliency, what we need to do for wastewater treatment, all sorts of infrastructure build-out. So we looked at it not just from a town perspective, but we also took in our partners that are in different towns and started to organize their information and the things that worked and the things that didn't, and ultimately put this thing together. So I'm going to go to the next slide, but I'm, the best thing is, I'm going to hand this off to Joyce.
You were doing so good. Go team!
She is just so fantastic.
No, please, go on. No, keep going on. You're on a roll. It's a team. Go, I love it.
I am the vice chair, regrettably, but I'm here.
You're doing amazing.
So some of the benefits, right? Local bylaw changes to the town meeting itself, right? Supporting those changes. The LCP consistency is required for developments of the regional impact reviewed by the Cape Cod Commission. So anytime you see acronyms, feel free to stop us and ask what that is. Some of them I still am asking myself what they are. Priority and consideration for the Cape Cod Commission, planning and technical assistance. So this is enabling that group to actually support us with gathering data, synthesizing that data, and providing it in a way that our townspeople can consume and our select board can consume, so they can make strategic decisions and technical decisions along the way. And then we have the ability, by putting this plan into place, setting up development agreements, right? And obviously, we can assess and impact fees themselves, so I don't know if, do we want to talk through the pictures here, or we can move forward?
Keep going, I think the, yeah.
Cool, great. Awesome.
I like the process slides that you're coming to. I was really excited about this.
Yeah, yeah. So the, this is a multi-plan effort. It encompasses a few different things. Now, when we first took this journey on, we thought it was just the LCP, but we realized there was many other plans that were out of date, and we were able to, as a town, work with tie-in bond to build those plans and get, what I think the hardest piece was probably the housing production plan through, because it's got what I would consider the most controversial pieces of the puzzle, right? What is affordable housing? What is attainable housing? How do we, how do we strategize and build goals against it? And so that was approved, which was fantastic, which puts it in the LCP, but that does not mean the LCP is approved, which is honestly the next goal here, is to get the select board to understand and see the vision and make sure that everybody in the town is fully on board with it. And if there's tweaks and changes we need to make, because we didn't hear something, that's a burning desire, we want to open it up today to have those conversations. And then obviously, the open space and recreational plan, which was very, very important to not only get that information, but also it's a big part of what makes Harwich Harwich and differentiates this town from a lot of other towns. And so we want to make sure we not only emphasize that in, I think we even talked to Duncan about this, but how does that, how do you move through the space as a, as a person, as a member of this town, not just in the open space, but also in the villages and the townships that make us up, right? So the organization, and this is just high-level, it's broken into three, we call it systems. So natural systems.
And this is not our design. This is the status, this is the convention of these plans that, so to be approved and all the things you've talked about, so it's not like we put this organization. This is what is done in these plans.
Yeah. So this was basically a template from the Cape Cod Commission and what gets approved by the state and also the CCC. But ultimately, we break these systems down into natural systems, built systems, and community systems. And you could argue, maybe one thing should go in another group, but again, this is the template that we're given, and so we work within what we got. These are my favorite slides.
Oh, I'm actually, so I missed some of these, so I'm going to let you go through.
Do you want, man? Oh, okay. So just, you know, I know you've all been keeping track of this at home. It's so nice to see everybody for feedback. It's great. But just to remind you kind of of this process. So we actually had our first meeting in, around this time of year in 2022. And, you know, there's a lot going on in the world, and that was a different town planner ago. This is pretty complex in terms of the getting tie-in bond, you know, who came on as our contractor, and none of that was in place. So we convened in the fall of 2022. Because the committee comes with a lot of different, you know, many, many, many decades of history in Harwich, divided sort of areas up in terms of personal subject matter expertise. So who identified the stakeholders? And again, these are all recorded videos, if you ever wanted to really dig into it all. So, you know, who are the stakeholders in town? What are the burning issues? Identified ourselves as subject matter experts in those areas. You may remember this, this postcard that came out in summer of 2023 that started the visioning process. And we collectively as a group have a lot of professional expertise in sort of qualitative, quantitative data, so this stuff is about as validated as it's going to be for this kind of work. So starting broadly, the questions were, you know, what do you love about Harwich? What concerns you? And is there anything else you want to tell us? And those were those blue postcards. Some of you, we've collected write-in ones here, there were digitally with that QR code. We got over 300 responses. We were at the Cranberry Festival for like the last two years, I'm like randomly recognized around the community as, oh, you're the planning lady. You know, okay, that's a dubious talent, dubious honor, but that's cool in our lovely small town. And that broad qualitative data, which, you know, if anyone really wanted to dig into, we have all that available. Time Bond has kept good record of that. Then informed this very detailed survey that we had over 1,000 responses for that were based on the categories that we knew we're going to have to get to with the plan. So we asked a lot about, you know, schools, we asked a lot about water, we asked a lot about open space, we asked a lot about housing, we asked a lot about development, and those are very, it was a ton of effort spent on that survey and sort of the quality of that survey and how it was structured and how we could use that data, over 1,000 responses that is very numerative, so very quantitative data, but also a lot of qualitative data, where, you know, quotes were pulled out, and people are really telling you in their own response how they're, how they're, you know, what concerns them about Harwich, what they value about Harwich. Just full transparency, that's all like a validated thing in the sense of those are all independent URLs, so we're very confident that that is 1,000 individual people, not only based on sort of the back security of it, but also the fact that, you know, people wrote us so much text, so much qualitative data. That then informed the workshops that were in March and April of 2024. We had one at the 204, one at the community center. Time Bond took us through, that's the colored stickies type of things in terms of, you know, how do you end up at some of these recommendations? That was that work, again, based on the, the survey data that comes before and prioritizing things like that. The housing production plan got done first, that was approved this winter by the select board and then approved by the state, which we're grateful for. Now we're here to get your public feedback on the draft. I think of note, what's interesting that certainly we have learned, you know, the standard now is this is an interactive document. This is not going to be something, and I had to get there too, it's not going to be something that's printed as a doc. It is meant to be a living document, it's digital, it's searchable, it's very visual. That's a little bit of an adjustment to adjust your eyes, because it, you know, depending on how you're doing your reading and stuff like that, I do a lot of reading, and it, it's different. It's in horizontal, it's not continuous, it's a little more, depends on how, interactive versus choppy, depending on what you want, what your, what your take on it is, but that is the standard. And, and that, that is what we have, and there's pros and cons to it, and we want to hear about that too, but that's what we got. More to go on to the next slide? Yes, so these were the workshop themes, you know, which you all told us about. What are the biggest issues facing Harwich and what do you think about it? Land use and growth, housing, environmental resource protection, community facilities and infrastructure. And as you saw, articulately put, a lot of this overlaps, for sure. And that's why also kind of sometimes when you read the, the plan, it feels, you know, it's dense. It's 100 something plus pages of a lot of information, both statistics, but also, you know, guardrails and plans sort of going forward. So it's, the poor document itself is asked to do a lot going forward. Next slide. So this statement, I think it's worth, since, you know, we're here in this, this forum and we're doing this thoroughly, I think it's worth reading out loud. You've seen this before, and you've been asked to comment on this before, but it's good to say it out loud, you know, what is our community vision? In 2050, Harwich is a vibrant and sustainable community that honors its natural beauty, historic charm, and village character, while meeting the needs of our residents for attainable housing to support economic and community growth. Our commitment to this vision is deeply rooted in the protection of water and natural resources, recognizing their intrinsic value to our community. And again, you know, this is all based on both quantitatively and qualitatively, both in that survey, those surveys and our community vision sessions and, you know, interacting with you over and over and over again for this period of time, what you have told us as a community are the priorities. Part, you have to have a growth policy. We actually debated that. Do we want any growth? Do we need a growth policy? And we have been educated that you have to have a growth policy and a comprehensive plan, and so that's what this growth policy is, a statement of. So Harwich, as part of the Cape Cod region, has a limited capacity to absorb additional population growth without degrading the environment upon which we all depend and enjoy. To achieve our vision, the Harwich growth policy is to meet the needs of future generations for housing and economic sustainability through strategic investments in infrastructure focused on our seven unique village areas. So something that, that's something you really told us that Harwich is not one thing, and those of us, you know, as we're living here, we know this. But any growth has to be, if we have to grow, to continue to be sustainable, right, and thrive as a community and not just, you know, become Quakers or something, like, you know, as a community continues to grow, how, how do you strategize around that? And that is around the, the unique village areas. So infrastructure and facilities will be implemented at an appropriate scale, again, you told us all this, to protect historic and community character and protect and restore the environment. Harwich will actively collaborate with neighboring communities to address regional infrastructure needs, you mentioned that, including reliable internet services, wastewater, and transportation improvements. And I shouldn't throw the Quakers under the bus, it's the Shakers, you know what I'm saying? The idea of like, because Harwich actually has a long Quaker history, but yes, yes, the meeting house and everything, but the idea of like, a community that continues to have young people and a diverse community. So, next slide. You told us, and, and I don't think any of this is news, but it's, that's the point of this plan, is to sort of, at this point in time, what are the key issues facing the town? Housing affordability, lack of available land for construction of affordable and attainable housing. That inherent tension, right? Over and over again, we've heard, we've tried to embody in this plan, this inherent tension of a community that folks can live in, but also we are inherently limited by our very precious natural resources. The ongoing challenge of limited sewer infrastructure, we've talked about the village identity and character that is so, so important. Climate change and climate impact extends beyond all of us, and we've, that is an enormous force that a lot of the plan is by definition devoted to, because the plan has to address that, and managing growth and resource protection. Next slide. So just to kind of summarize before, and then we want to really open it up in, for public comment. The natural systems, again, this infrastructure, this organization, we have to follow, so natural systems. Pond profiles, expanding and monitoring open space in public water supply areas. Continue resource management in the six ponds, DCPC area. Develop coastal rebuilding standards. And you'll notice that some of this language, you know, the action verbs are intentionally broad, because as you've covered, this is a non-binding, these are meant to be sort of like a general lane, it's not saying you have to do this. There are some things we said pretty strongly that we have to do, but these are meant to, you know, the words are action-oriented but intentionally broad to accommodate for, like, as the world unfolds. Continue to implement the comprehensive wastewater management plan and protecting habitat and preparing land management plans. Next slide. Built systems, there's a lot in there, which we don't have to, I think we should open it up and not, you know, read the slides to you. One of the things we really tried to emphasize is caring for our community, emphasizing the cultural, artistic, historic vibrancy of our community, how you continue to develop that. Some of the things that we, what we were absolute, super strong about is continuing to support our school system as well as our older residents, what you could articulate as some of the most vulnerable potentially, you know, members of our community. And as you guys look at the plan and you kind of adjust your eyes to looking at that, the action plan, the actions are prioritized sort of on a grid, and you have to kind of adjust yourself to that. There's a color coding and generally trying to understand, you know, there's something that, some things that we would absolutely love to do, but are very challenging to do, so they get coded in one way as opposed to something that's very important to do and it's not very hard to do. So that's coded in a different way, and that's like the colors in the right hand, right lower hand of those horizontal slides as you look at this thing. Community systems, this ends up being a lot of housing. That's just the way the convention of these plans work. So supporting sort of, you can see all of those things there onwards. And this is some of the capital facilities, this is where it gets into Christine and our professional staff that we're so grateful, that works for the town and helps us with all this, their expertise in the sense of, if this is where we're headed, how do you financially start to structure yourself to be able to implement some of that plan?
Good. And we can go back if there's certain
Yeah.
sections that you guys want to go back to and talk through, more than happy to.
I think we have a wonderful showing. It's great. The plan, Christine, is there anything as our fearless planner in town, is there something you would like to add and, or anything you want to make sure we know before we open it up to public comment?
No, other than, I think we did try to cover the final draft plan and that this has been a great process. We did a great job in terms of community engagement and visioning. Sorry, I was just saying, I want to compliment the committee for doing a great job in terms of community engagement and outreach and also reaching out to town, our local boards, particularly the regulatory boards over the last two years, and this has been a positive process and we really look forward to hearing your feedback and your input and continuing that this plan will, that will work to make it work in the long run, the work that's gone into this. It's very exciting.
And, you know, we're here to hear it all. I, I think, I mean, it goes without saying, but it's worth talking about. We are open to honest and direct feedback, but we would expect that to be said, you know, with the respect and camaraderie that comes with living in Harwich. We're open to it all.
And people need to go to the mic so that
Yes. So if anybody wants to make a comment, please step on up. Just say your name and what area Harwich you're from and
Ooh.
Yeah.
Oh.
Maybe a fun fact.
Town mate. Identify your village, that's good. We like the village.
I'm Elizabeth Harder from Harwich Center.
Hello.
I'm the delegate to the Bardspole County Assembly of Delegates, and I want to let you know that what I think will be a bonus is that the Cape Cod Commission is right now redoing, updating the regional policy plan. So that I think will help people understand what you're doing, give you more opportunities to hear what a plan is, what the, what the growth plan is for the Cape and all that. But the most important thing I want to say is that you people are divine. You have worked so hard and done such a good job, and it is unbelievable the commitment you all have made, and we all can't thank you enough. And when this is all over, we need to have a big party for you people. So thank you.
All right.
That's been recorded, hasn't it?
Thank you.
That will be provision from Don Howell's budget.
No, we, we enjoy each other. That's actually been the gift of service, is getting to know one another better in our, you know, really spectacular community. Welcome.
And how, East Harwich, it's really a question as well as a comment.
Yeah, that's what this is, yeah.
Under which category do you have addressing the growth of, growth, sorry, I've got a tooth issue. The growth of toxins that are increasingly entering the town with, you know, we have water issues, but that's almost a separate line item. And it's going to become an increasing problem because it's going to directly conflict with drinking water protection, health protection.
When you say toxins, well, Margot, who is our subject matter expert in water and ponds, actually has a family
I'm talking about lawns.
Is not able to be here, so she, I kind of like, yes, so, but yes, elaborate a little bit more about that.
Fertilizer.
And, yeah, what you're thinking, you're, you're thinking like nitrogen fertilizers?
I'm talking about insect sprays, I'm talking
Got it.
About things that are spread on lawns.
But not plastics?
Well, haven't gotten to that one yet.
Okay, all right. I was just, category of toxins, because then I'm going to have a response. Yeah, go ahead.
And, you know, there's really no good way to collect the degree of those toxins entering until after the fact, when the knowledge and the money we are spending, great idea, on the septic system replacement. So it, it just seems to me that it's not brought up enough, and I'm not sure how to work it into a plan like this.
I think Bernadette has Ctrl+F fired up. Do you? Because we do have, or do I, are you, is that what you're doing over there? Or I could fire it up.
Natural systems would be the area.
It is in natural systems, and if anyone, I could pull it up, but if you hit Ctrl+F and you, fertilizer, there is a suggestion in there, consider, I want to say we said consider fertilizer ban, consider
But I'm also talking about insect sprays and whatnot.
That's great, this is why we're getting the feedback. So it'll all be recorded and there may be, that may be, but it was something that was thought of, but I appreciate what you're saying and perhaps better defined.
It's a really big issue that doesn't come up, and it affects everybody's health, and there is no way to address it within the system of the town. And then I'm going to go on to the unnatural ones like PFAS.
Yep.
Which increasingly look pretty serious, and that's something where then we should be looking at a water treatment plant, which I didn't see that as a specific line item in this, as something to really, I'm going to say pursue, because we know it's not an easy issue, because it may involve other towns, and yet, one of the premises here was to open this up to make sure that our town, not huge, amplifies our efforts with the adjoining towns. And I suspect the pressures are going to increase in those areas, and so that may be something where if it was difficult in the past, it will become more urgent and something where if it was difficult in the past, it will become more urgent in the future. That's just my guess, in my opinion. Anyway, that, that is something. And I also didn't see separate item, but it may overlap, addressing the whole issue of zoning. And I'm not sure which rubric that is under because it, these are suggested goals, but in fact, they have to be reflected in zoning and then zoning becomes something that is enforced, not just a suggestion and action verb. Anyway, that's my two cents.
That's beautiful. Thank you.
Joyce?
Yes, David, go ahead.
We're not going to be able to quickly respond to everything that you might bring up. However, page 94.
Oh, yes. You have your Ctrl+F.
Underwater references, objectives and actions. We do have reference of PFAS and we do have reference to fertilizer management. I suspect they're not going to go as far as you would like to see, but there is at least some treatment of it.
Now, I have it open too, so if people have very important, specific, you know, issues where you're coming kind of as a subject matter expert, you know, well, we have it open now. Thank you, David. And that's like, as you get to know this thing, this beast of a thing at home, that's a benefit of it being electronic is the, like, starting to be able to find some of those line items. Thank you.
I think she also was asking specifically about the zoning and wastewater treatment. I don't know if there's specific things that we want to address on zoning. I know that's covered in the housing section, but I just don't exactly where.
Ed, do you want to say something about wastewater?
Wastewater is one issue, but you asked about PFAS in the, in the water supply system.
Water treatment.
Yeah, and there are, I think, four towns that have had to implement water treatment to take out the PFAS issues. It's not yet shown in our supply and, but our water department monitored it monthly and is looking for it. And as soon as, and if it happens, we'll respond, they'll respond appropriately. Chatham, Barnstable, Eastham, and I believe Sandwich have had issues so far, but from a, an issue of controlling PFAS, obviously it's, it's the result of products that are in virtually everything that's manufactured. And that's going to take, obviously, some control of both national and international bodies too, and that's not going to happen right now.
I need to just...
Yeah.
You have to come to the mic.
And then for wastewater, you know, we continue to move ahead implementing the plan that was adopted and updating the plan. And we encourage that to happen in several parts, we, places we, the initial plan was developed to respond purely, you know, essentially to the issue of nitrogen in our estuaries. But in terms of, and it was laid out, the plan was laid out to have the biggest impact on the earliest phases. What we're finding now though, some of those phases don't really coincide with other issues that the town's facing, like being able to provide a density of housing in village centers. And so we've made a suggestion that in the town in updating, continually updating the wastewater implementation plan, that they look at those issues and see how those could also be addressed on a near, on a sooner rather than later time.
Thank you, Ed. And one thing on the zoning, it's actually in about three, it covers three different systems. This goes into the, the housing stuff, so the build systems, the natural systems and the water system. So, there's a few different pages I can reference, but the zoning and addressing zoning so that it's sustainable to the growth of this town and managed appropriately with our growth policy, it should be in there. So we can...
Yeah, it's in the executive summary, you know, like if you just start hitting, like looking for zoning, again, like, you know, kind of, I think what you're saying is an obvious challenge and tries to be repetitively referenced there.
I found a couple of references in the action implementation that may address, that may address as far as...
Sure.
One was under, it's on page 126, underwater natural systems. We have adopt landscape guidelines for restoration of wetland buffer zones. Also amend zoning bylaw to increase regulatory requirements for new development to preserve or create meaningful percentage of the site as native habitat that creates or expands wildlife corridors. And also there was something I missed.
94 has PFAS on it.
But there are some references, specific references to it in the implementation schedule.
David.
So...
And then we'll go, more comments.
It's going to take a while to figure out this plan, but I cited to you where we list it first, but then, do we really think we can do anything about it? That's where we get to our action plan implementation. So now I'll just drop a number, page 125, in which we thought we were going to do better on PFAS than we were going to do on fertilizer management. Fertilizer management, we gave a three in terms of impact and we gave a one in terms of feasibility. We didn't think the town was going to have an easy time doing that.
So, and you have to kind of get, and there's a visual in there, and I may screw this up even though we've done this, so correct me if I'm wrong. Like, impact is a higher number and feasibility would be a higher number, right? So like, if something's really important and very feasible, it gets a four and a four. And this is a validated thing. We're not making this up. This is a, you know, Brian is our, you guys are our process people around this and planning and...
You're exactly right.
Yes. So, so it's not a, it's not a system that we made up. This is like best practice consulting when sort of kind of around this strategic planning. So if something's very high impact to the town, based on what you've told us in our deliberations, and very possible, it gets a four and a four. And to build on what David was saying, if it's, you know, and there's, you know, one through four in terms of impact, and then feasibility, if it's really hard to do for a variety of reasons, then it gets a one in this plan.
Yeah, we were more optimistic about the PFAS and the...
And, and that is just sort of a finger on the pulse, so.
We're talking more about insect spray and lawn care. And there are other towns that have...
You have to go to the mic so people can hear you.
Come on up.
I'm just repeating.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's all good. It's all good. And then we'll get, and then we'll open everyone up. Good.
The, the things that you, that I was suggesting should be, if you will, a line item of high impact because they are toxic would be things like insect sprays and even salt spreading and even what kind of fertilizers can be put on because some of them have very aggressive chemicals in them. And there, there are other towns that have areas that they designate where they cannot be used. And, and it is that use of area boundaries.
Like in water resources or drinking or things like...
Or areas that are to be protected.
Sure.
I live in the Six Ponds area. It's been designated, nothing is done to protect it. There is no one to call, nothing that limits use. It does impact the water, but it's larger than, for example, Buck's Pond. And I think going forward, there's been such an increase, I mean, clouds of insect spray and, you know, the, the amount of things spread on lawns because lawns were not originally the Cape Cod way. That's a suburban Boston scenario. And so, I'm just suggesting those chemicals and the way they are spread could be geofenced.
And managed.
Yep.
And geofencing is normative and so that there is a rationale and it's a universally beneficial rationale. And especially with so many people moving here from elsewhere, they don't have that guidance, rather than looking at it as enforcement, it's guidance as to what can be done. And I'm sure Mary has it someplace in her plan because that's how Mary works. But I just wanted to lay out what the point is.
It's our plan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Understood. Awesome. Duncan?
Hi, Duncan Berry, West Harwich. First of all, again, congratulations on an amazingly comprehensive document. And my question is, you know, having to use previous versions of this, iterations of local comprehensive plans over the years, they turn into time capsules. And I've heard us discuss, or you discuss, the idea of this keeping this a, kind of a vibrant, open textur document. What does that mean? Or is this going to be kind of a web resident HTML document that can be accessed and annotated and discussed within the body of it or within like appendices to it? Will it be, you know, will it be refreshed with, you know, updated laws and, you know, and, you know, tracking, for instance, some of the recommendations? Will they'll be like checkmarked or something? Because to me, that'll be a way to, for, I think, for the public to see how it gets actually...
I think all of the...
This is Brian's special talent. Yeah. So, thank you.
Living roadmaps are my passion. Duncan, I think everything you've just suggested are viable. So we've created suggestions. I think what we need to do is, we'd love to follow up with you, with Christine. It's going to be ultimately the responsibility of the town administrator serving the select board. So, anything that goes forward to help track implementation, tie back to decisions, tie back to capital plans, that's our intent, to have this thing tracked right down to the action level. We've even had discussions as to whether we do that semi-annually, quarterly, we've given a lot of thought to it. I think you bring up some wonderful ideas for technique that can be facilitated with technology, I shouldn't say fairly easily, but it would be nice to tie this together so that it's not only living, but it's accessible, it's visible, and therefore it's less burdensome to have to publish updates, but they're real-time managed. So, the answer is, we highly believe in something that's living and therefore, in fact, I might ask Christine to comment about how we can move some of these recommendations into a tighter set of actions post this committee ending. If, is this committee going to end?
Please, for the love of God.
I want it on the record.
And then Bernadette and then Christine. And I'll, so, you know, there has been, which, you know, to remind everyone, this, you know, in this meeting, and, you know, we serve at the pleasure of the select board and there, we would, it makes a lot of sense from everything we have heard these last three years, to continue to have some sort of checkback in a way that is integrated with the select board, both in terms of the long-term planning, but also the inevitable stuff that happens in town, right? I mean, some of the things you can't even plan for, but this thought is supposed to be then a collection of the best thinking at the time.
No, you covered it.
Okay. Christine?
Yes, I was just going to follow up that, you know, this is a guidance document, it's a roadmap for the town and, and as a choice, it indicates, you know, this committee serves the pleasure of the select board and it's our hope that an implementation committee be excited to orient point their, you know, if we do an annual review in terms of long and short-term goals. But barring that, there, there's enough, there are enough action items that various, it doesn't have to take an implementation committee to move this forward. Other boards and other town committees can also take the lead. We have identified other stakeholders in this and so there are enough action items that community, community members can also become more involved in terms of the town's process. So, and I would encourage you to really take a look at the action items and look at those who have been identified as stakeholders and, you know, there's a lot of opportunity for having a positive and impactful change to the, to the town.
I think one of the points too, just to really emphasize, you mentioned earlier about like, how do we enforce, how do we make sure there's somebody to call? Like part of the, the action plans themselves, because they call out stakeholders and because they call out specific groups that can help monitor and manage and execute on that plan or the action, we should as a town have enough to be like, I can piece this and tie it to that, right? Whereas in other plans, we weren't able to do that. And so I think one of the biggest differentiators of what we've done with this plan is not just the implementation team suggestion or committee suggestion, which I really hope the select board takes us up on. I will do another 10 years if I need to, but...
How many more kids?
We've enabled our townspeople to be able to see and feel, when should this have been done? Why did we measure it the way we did? And if it's not getting done, who in what group could be held accountable where I can actually...
Language is so aggressive. I, I was going to, I was going to, I mean, this is the balance, but I was also like, you know, picking up what you were saying of guidance. I mean, language, attitude, all this sort of really matters. I mean, it's not punitive. It's our best thinking as a community, but then we have to get more comment.
One more, oh, why not? If I could.
All right, Ed.
You know...
Then Brian, and then we have public comment. We know what we think.
One of the things that we, we've talked about, I think, in the plan and also tonight is that the essence of, that this is sort of a living document that sort of changes and grows over time. The problem that, one of the problems you face is it's, it's also a legal document. It's, will be approved by town meeting and the Cape Cod Commission and becomes the basis on which can become a justification for development proposals going forward. And to the extent that you go through a process and say, well, okay, we're going to change this whole section and don't go through the rest of the process of taking it back to town meeting and through the commission, it leaves you legally up in the air whether that's a valid new goal or not, that somebody could base a development proposal on. So we, you know, it's, to the extent that we look at and take in potential changes and keep track of them, it would probably make the next time we update it a lot easier and quicker to go through. But it's, it's also something on a legal basis that you have to be careful of.
Brian, and then we have a public...
Also, what makes it a living document is the ability to over time reprioritize, right? This is a point in time. This is the summer of 2025. When I've done this, and I've done it with many private sector clients, done strategic roadmaps, they're usually set up such that on an annual basis, you reprioritize because new ideas come in or things that you thought were easy to do when you started became more difficult. So things happen over the course of time. So what makes it living, and it really adds to Ed's comment, if, if we've done this right, there is the ability to reprioritize, is the ability to update action items, to track them to completion. Therefore, when you look out 10 years, you're, you're simply in a process where you're evolving a strategic plan that still has the same legs that you had when you started.
That's why it's like 200 and something pages. I was at 175, but it's like more now.
Anyway.
And, you know, some of the priorities you, we were mentioning about, you know, it's a high part, high impact but low possibility. Well, a lot of, a lot of those low possibilities are based on it, it, it's something we'd like to see happen, but there's problems with having to get a general home rule petition through the state legislature. Well, if they change it and make it permissible, then it becomes much more easy for, it becomes, goes from being a high, a high impact and a high possibility.
Let's get to Sally, please. Go ahead. We have to stop. We have to talk less. Our important community came. Tell us.
Good evening. I'm Sally Urban from West Harwich.
Hi.
I've not, I've never gotten or accomplished the Extempo thing, so I'm too old now, I'm going to have to read it to you.
Oh, yeah.
And it's basically some impressions and thoughts.
Please.
I'm not even sure there's actionable items.
And we're going to try to talk less and we want to listen. Go ahead.
Of course, first, I wish to acknowledge your work on this complex project and thank you this evening for the chance for us to give input so we get the best outcomes for Harwich. Within the plan, there should be notes on an approach to accomplish historic preservation. And I'm finding difficult to get a complete picture... and I'm finding difficult to get a complete picture of that. I've only read it three times, and it might need a few more times. You mentioned the tribes of Nauset and the Wampanoags, and I hope that in mentioning this, you are planning for an archaeological review of potential sites in Harwich. It's been on need for a very long time. My focus really is on the West Harwich Captains Row, which is the DPC zoning overlay district with design guidelines. And I saw that you met with a group in East Harwich, and I was wondering if perhaps we could do that for West Harwich, because I want to, I can't get the sense if we're on the same page, or if there's, if there isn't a way we could maybe help each other. Because West Harwich Route 28 has our town's largest traffic numbers, not counting Route 6, and we are within the impaired Herring River system. There are limitations, especially since we are not slated for searing until the last phases. So what density and growth can we handle? What can be done to promote historic preservation of the facade of buildings, even if reuse is proposed, and so that our nomination as a national registered district can be completed and not impacted? If housing is to be spread across the town, and I think that's what I read you to say, how do we in West Harwich fit in with our already high density and multiple types of housing along 28? These questions will be critical for a well-rounded, livable community. In essence, the best planning takes into account historic preservation, economic success, environmental considerations, and varied housing for all things in planning, and I hope that we can address this clearly and help each other out going forward. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. More feedback.
Wow, you really are talking less.
Just like the awkward silence.
My name's Deborah Ennis, and I'm in Pleasant Lake neighborhood or village, and I'm concerned about this, and great work, and like, I'm learning a lot as I go along, and I actually looked over the whole document and kind of scanned for references to the need for addressing climate adaptation and mitigation of, you know, the effects. And I saw several references to the need for a climate action plan. And so that's what I'm here to speak to, is I would like stronger language, not to just say it's needed, but that it's imperative, like that we're in a really critical time. Five years ago, at town meeting, the town adapted the Climate Emergency Resolution, and we haven't really done a lot with that. And there are, there are some areas where there's been some progress, but just if we went for the idea of becoming, you know, getting the climate action plan, there is assistance that's available. Like, Eastham right now is in the midst of a really impressive effort. I went to a meeting the other night, they've been working with the Cape Cod Commission, and they've really gotten a lot of buy-in from the residents, and they're moving toward having a climate action plan. And if we had that plan, it would tie together a lot of the loose ends from the different areas that are mentioned here. And it would also allow us to move forward as a climate leader, which would also give us more resources from the state, including technical assistance in developing these things. So I just want to really encourage that one of the action things says very strongly and clearly that there is a need for a climate action plan. I see that this comprehensive plan is based on other plans, so it's not incongruous that that would, you know, coincide with the climate action plan, like it mentions, you know, the housing production plan and various policy plans that have been created previously. So it wouldn't interfere with the LCP to reference a plan that is more geared toward really addressing how to handle the changes that are happening with flooding and droughts and just the damage to infrastructure that could happen as a result, and to people and their lives and their livelihoods. So that's my recommendation.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jenny Hewitt. I'm the library director at Brooks Library, and also a resident of Howard Center. So Howard Center is one of my big concerns, but I want to, first of all, say, thank you so much. You've done so much work. It was an ordeal for me to read through the whole. And I'm a librarian. So I'm very, like, just so impressed. And so I had some comments.
Please.
A lot of comments, because of course, I didn't start with this, the summary here. I started from page one, so my notes kind of go that way.
Yeah.
But, but I'll, but I'll try to just go back. One of the things, because some of the, some of the, my comments are related to, there's multiple parts in the plan, and then they're in the goals, and so the comments would kind of apply to everything. But on the goals, on the community, well, we're going to have the action plan goals, it's page 131. I don't know, I can't see.
No, we like 130, we like page numbers, because we can find it. Yeah.
Well, it's about, I'm sorry, it's about built systems, community facilities, services, and infrastructures. And so the first, well, the goal is about maintaining community facilities, services, and infrastructures, but the first action item says promote programming of the 204 Cultural Arts Center, Howard Community Center, and Brooks Library, and identify additional program needs and opportunities. And my comments are that I think it's missing something. One is the Council on Aging and Recreation, they're not the same thing as the community center, and they both provide significant amount of programming. Along with other departments, to a smaller extent, health has been doing a lot of programming, youth and family services.
No, it's.
And conservation.
Amazing pointed feedback, yes, because I understand what you're saying.
The broader thing is, that's one thing, so maybe a combined goal or combined language in the place wherever it says programming, or maybe it's a separate thing.
Yep.
I also think, programming is one thing, but services and resources are something else. And I feel like that's like my broader point. I think like a goal might, maybe an additional goal, I mean, on that first goal, you could maybe say, and other, oh, I think COA and REC need to be in there equally.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it was a misstep on our point.
On program, on, the town will provide resources and services that support community members at various stages of their lives and enhance their well-being, learning, and quality of life, something like that. I see that as a separate thing from programming. Programming can be entertainment. It, I mean, it's nice, but it's not the same as, you know, the Council on Aging provides a lot of in-depth services, sort of youth and family services. The library's got collections and resources.
Could you say it again? Your statement was, no, I liked it. It was good, like a proposal. Yes, go ahead.
Resources and, the town will provide resources and services that support community members at various stages of their lives and enhance their well-being, learning, and quality of life. Something like that.
Thank you.
And then, well, my first note's from page 11, so I'm not sure, I'm not, maybe it's here in the goals. Oh, it is. The one, support ongoing community efforts to make childcare and after-school services available. Like them both, support them. I think it's too limited by what is being said. It's like, I understand the goal is probably to be similar to, Chatham has this great Chatham 365 initiative, and it's meant to support working people and working families with any way they can, year-round. And so I think that's limiting it by saying two things they're already doing. So something broader like, like, I'd say more strongly word it, enhance support for families with children through, through expanding childcare subsidies and after-school activities.
Here, we got in this with this, so here, and I, like, this is, I think, a meaningful dialogue about this. So to your, your first point about 100%, we, knowing they are different things, but the language got lumped about Harwich Community Center, understanding that the, you know, senior services and the REC are three separate things. So thank you. That's like incredibly important granular feedback. Amazing. We, to open it up, because I remember this discussion completely, because I got kind of, not heated about it, but we had a thorough discussion about this. What we were trying to do about the, after, the, you know, childcare and after-school stuff, is we're trying to be supportive of it all, understanding that there's pretty creative solutions in town. You have pilgrim church, you have REC, you have, you know, the REC program, you have Coach John, who is actually doing more, even more beyond that, beyond the REC after-school. You have the Y in the elementary school, and.
And the schools themselves.
I'll be, the school themselves with their after-school clubs, I'll be very, I mean this respectfully, we didn't want to step in it, like, we agree, you know, like, we are, we didn't want to pick a horse in that race, because I think they're all valuable. So knowing that, is there a way to maybe word it that way? You know, because we didn't want to make it, so there are multi, there are many demog, many groups working on this in town, and we wanted to be supportive of them all.
No, I agree. I agree, and, but I, but I think saying childcare and after-school, those are just two specific actions, not the broader scope of whatever way we can, like, I know the Board of Assessors initiated a, in town meeting voted the, I'm going to say this right, Richard, correct me? No, oh, no, but I like that. But I'm talking about the, 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 the tax credit, you know, there's the, like, the tax work-off program for seniors now, and I, I thought there was a, we were asking the legislature for permission to do something for people that are not 65, that are financially impacted. So I'm just saying, there are, like, even just having the words "and other".
Got it.
Methods to support.
Got it. Got it. So not limiting it to school, because we, after-school stuff. I got you.
It's like, it's like, these already existed, so we have these ideas? We don't know what the other ideas might be.
Yep.
And then on page 49, about community design, it talks about village character, and it's Howard Center. And I, I think the Howard Historic District doesn't get as much billing there as I would like. It talks about it as, it mentions it, but it talks about it as like a cultural center, which is a different district. But, well, for one, it doesn't mention Brooks Academy and the old recreation building. Brooks Academy's not mentioned at all, and I think that's a, you know, important bookend of Howard Center. But, but I think that I'd like to see some kind of description of preserve and enhance historic Howard Center. There, if you look at the, the next section, it's, I think it's right after that, for Howardport, it talks about that in more detail, and it doesn't do the same for Howard Center. And we've had, I've been here 26 years, and we've had multiple Howard Center initiative, initiatives. And, and that work is still in progress, and I don't want to see that forgotten, because it's a historic district as well.
Yep.
And it's the only historic district in town. So I don't know, I just, that's just my thought. And there's other studies that have been done, the Cape Cod Commission did some studies, you know, that could be cited in there, or just like in your list of references. And then, all right, same thing, I think it's page 65. Can't, nice description of the library, thank you very much, and our services. But the very first line talks about extensive services and programs, including public printing, interlibrary loan, like, those are some of the minor things. It's kind of leading with, you know, the, the, like, that sentence could even go, or I could send you something, or, or that sentence could go, because the next, the next sentence is, or maybe there's a few paragraphs, there's a paragraph, you know, are really good.
Sure.
But.
Don't lead with the minutia. Yeah, you can make your copies of the library. Yeah, yeah.
I took it off of our reference section of our website.
Sure.
You know, which, that's what people are going to, to find out, do you have printing? And so anyway, and then, okay, there's a section on nonprofit and religious organizations, community organizations.
66.
66, yep. And doesn't, it lists the Junior Theater, but doesn't describe it, and I think that's like a huge cultural heritage thing for our town, like, it's.
Got some pictures of them, but I, I understand, yeah.
And I just thought maybe a little more on that. But on page 67, some churches are mentioned, but not all churches. And like, either, you shouldn't mention them all, or don't mention any, because that's not good. And, and also there's the Hands of Hope Food Pantry, which is, is smaller than, much smaller than Family Pantry. It's Food Pantry and Outreach Center, but it's run by the Cape Cod Council of Churches. It's an interfaith group.
West Harwich, yep.
So that's a.
Yep.
Just saying, it's there. And, all right, I have page 71, talks about analysis of community facility needs, and I was hoping you would add beach nourishment to ensure continued existence of town beaches threatened by erosion. That's not a library interest, that's me personally.
You get to be both. The library lady and, yes.
When it comes to town funds, there's not always the money, you know, and, and that's important, because as I understand it, when the beaches erode, even if later the sand decrees back, that, that new, newly formed beach is owned by the adjacent property owner, not the town anymore. There was a beach that that was happening to some years ago, was it?
West Harwich.
Yeah.
About a half mile of what used to be public beach is now privately owned.
Oh, okay. I want to back up, I have a, I have a note here I missed. When you're doing the nonprofit and religious organizations, page 66 and 67, there are two association libraries in Harwich, and, and they're part of the cultural heritage community, too, and, and very important to their neighborhood, one in Harwichport and one in West Harwich. So I thought they should at least be mentioned there.
Mm-hmm.
Not to be, not.
No, incredibly important, that's why we're doing this. Christine, just for like transparency, because it's good, like, this kind of like really spot-on granular feedback, like, yeah, the Harwichport Library, the West Harwich Library, we even actually talked about that. I espoused about Chase and Sam, you know, Sam Born and one of those meetings, and the, and the ongoing, you know, fund that that is still funded by that coffee family, and, you know, in, in town that helps people stay in their homes and things like that. Still locally administered, but can we, you, are you going to, you're going to kind of take this with Sharon in the sense of, I just want to make sure we're having a closed loop about, you've done such a good job about giving us very specific feedback that we have to correct. I want to make sure, because the weird thing about this is, in this beautiful document, the town, we don't have the software, it's not complicated, but it's an Adobe document. I can't go in there and be like, oh, yes, add this sentence, and it's got to go back through the consultant unless something changes, for right now, I can't edit this document. So I just want to.
Can you give us in writing?
Well, I, I'm trying to set the standard here for closing the loop on this really important feedback, that these edits need to be changed, you know, yeah.
So I would recommend that you could send us comments in writing, and that goes to everyone. That would be helpful, but I am taking notes.
Perfect. Because I want to make sure, you've done the honor, done us the honor of giving us such important feedback, want to make sure it gets done, is what I'm saying. If I could do it myself, I would. I can't. Yeah.
Thank you. So I guess finally, I just want to say the, I think one of the overall goals, it's in the missions, I love all the housing stuff, I think that's so important, and I think, I'm just wondering if it should be a little more specific about preserving a year-round working age community, because that's what makes us a community, we're not, and I don't have the wording for that, I don't know.
It's not the villages in Orlando, yes.
And there's one other thing that didn't occur to me, I wrote up all my notes, was I saw it in another town's local comprehensive plan, I don't know if it was, I looked at Sandwich, Yarmouth, and Brewster, and we don't have anything, I don't believe, in there about broadband, and I think that's a huge need. It's a, it's an economic development thing, it's services to residents. Open Cape was developed by community, by, by community leaders, municipal and county government, the Cape Cod Community College, and, and business, businesses and nonprofits that couldn't, you know, the college was hosting all of the content off Cape because the infrastructure wasn't here. So they were ready in the 2009, like, economic downturn and got that, that money, but the town hasn't taken advantage of that. The library has Open Cape through, through our CLAM's network, because when they got, you know, I don't know, billions of dollars of, of federal money for that project, libraries were anchor institutions, so that the pub, schools were another, but the libraries were one, so that they could, the public can get high-speed access. But it's more, and I can't give you the technical, technical reasons, but it has to do with how the infrastructure is built, that. the infrastructure is built, that more reliant and more redundancy. So it's not that you will never be out, but traffic gets rerouted more easy than traditional broadband goes, like, in a linear fashion down the street. And, um, and, and so if you're down, down current, I guess, of where the break is, then you're not going to get it, where it, it can re, Open Cape systems can be rerouted. And they've also been working a lot on, um, neighborhood, and some towns, I think Falmouth was working on, uh, more Wi-Fi in their, you know, better broadband in their net, in their neighborhoods. Um, yeah, and we are not, as I understand it, the last I heard, there were several, there were going to be several opportunities where they were about to partner with towns to help do this in certain areas, and, um, we're not ready. We're not ready for that, and I think that our whole technology infrastructure for town government, and then also for our residents and businesses, is not there, so.
Thank you.
I already think ten.
No, 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 thank you, it's excellent. And, and one of the, I just want to kind of acknowledge in this, saying, one of the, the benefits, but also the shortcomings of this convention, of this document, is that sometimes what we see is based on the design. And the design, that's why we're revising it, is not perfect. And it's, you know, there, the, the consultant has, has worked on this, whatever, and it needs to be revised, because to your point, um, about the year-round, in our vision statement, the vision statement is much longer than just what's highlighted on page seven. So the, you know, the first two paragraphs are in, of that statement are blue and big, but the state, the whole statement goes on the rest of the page. And to your point, um, as we move forward, our work is to balance different needs and priorities, supporting both a thriving summer tourist economy and a year-round community. So the idea is there, but it totally gets lost in some of the, you know, the, the push-pull of this being a visual document, but if the, the vision, if the visual parts aren't exactly right, then some things are buried more than they should be, so that's why we're, we're doing this. Yeah.
Thank you.
Before you come up, I just want to make sure we have, we let everybody else, because... Hold on, hold on, though, I want to make sure we, we get, we're open, okay? All right, come up, but, but, yeah, come up, but then we want to make sure we have time for everybody else, too.
This is Ann Howe, East Harwich. I actually worked on Open Cape's implementation, and I'm going to make a footnote to future that when you speak with other towns, that you may want to suggest that when the new bridge is built, that fiber optic be laid under the infrastructure. Currently, the fiber optic is under the old railroad bridge. And ideally, you don't want a single point of failure. And it's incredibly difficult to get fiber optic laid under a bridge after it is constructed. Even if it doesn't have a connection point, you can put tubes that it can later be put in. And it's an optimal thing to do for the whole Cape, but witness this comment, it gives the town of Harwich much more to work from. Now, that shouldn't probably be in it, except in your discussions with other towns, but it's a really important thing for infrastructure.
Thank you.
So is that something that should be more Cape Cod Commission, or, it's certainly bigger than Harwich?
That's not in the purview of this committee.
Right, but, but how do we raise that up?
Brian, in a, in our growth, um, statement.
Everything to everybody.
It, the last.
It does talk about, it does talk about internet.
Regional infrastructure needs, including reliable internet services.
Yeah.
But that gets, that gets done at a higher level, that just does, but we, that's something we could raise up with the Cape Cod Commission.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Richard Blaisdak of Harwichport, and I want to first commend you for your incredible amount of work over the last two and a half years, shall we call it?
It's like, we kind of ran up to three. Garrett's had three kids in the.
I've had two, I've redid the math.
Okay, in this process, but, yeah. Go ahead, go ahead.
And a tremendous amount of work, obviously, and thought has been put into the plan. And I go back to one of your first meetings, and we had a discussion, and I'm representing the Board of Assessors, tonight as I speak, and we today did something that was an aspirational goal in one of your first meetings, was creating an affordable housing tax credit. Today, we signed off on our first affordable housing tax credit for a resident of this community who has provided housing to two people.
Cool.
In their property. And I go back, Mr. Sheldon and Mr. Berry, as they talked about, I don't want to use or governance or compliance, but buying from different departments, committees in town. We're the Board of Assessors, we're doing something about housing. It's not in our purview, but we felt that we could offer a tax credit that we got through town meeting, that started in one of your first meetings. So I think it's imperative that the town buys in to this plan. And when we endorse this plan, and when town meeting approves it, that there are different committees and different departments in this community that need to take hold of it. We don't want it sitting on a shelf, and say, ten years from now, well, let's take a look at that that was done back in twenty-twenty-five. But it should be a living document, and there should be a way, when we talked about creating tax credits for affordable housing, to put in there, that, that has been updated. It was approved at the town meeting in twenty-twenty-five, and has been implemented as soon as August of twenty-twenty-five.
Yep.
So it is a living document. I don't know how the technology works, I know the technophobes there can do it and make it work, rather than just sitting as a static document. So I, I appreciate Mr. Berry's comments, and yours, Mr. Shel, but I implore that this community buy into this, and that the committees, there are thousands of people who are involved some way or another in this community, volunteering, that they also buy in, so that we can have the best community here on Cape Cod. Thank you for your work.
I, I think that's a great comment.
The process matters, yeah.
And I think that has to be raised up when this goes to town meeting. That same statement needs to be made, because it needs to be a select board mandate that makes this living.
If you consult the calendar, just for reference, for historical reference, our first meeting was nine thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, so we're hitting our three-year mark next month, guys.
Anniversary.
Is that a paper or a glass anniversary?
Clocks.
More community. Thank you for all coming, you're here, anybody have thoughts or feedback? Yeah. Oh, please.
Thank you, and thanks, everyone, for all your hard work and preparation. I really appreciate it. Uh, my name is Rebecca Mendibl from Harwich Center, Englewood Drive, and, uh, in reading the list of priorities, I wondered if this committee has considered collaborating with HCT, Harwich Conservation Trust, in order to achieve at least a couple of those priorities. And then, uh, also, on that priority list, it said, continue to implement the wastewater plan, and I don't know all the obstacles, or how long it's been implemented, or if it's being held up, but, uh, I lived in Vermont from nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty, only ten years. And when I arrived there, and this is in the Eastover-Westover area, there was already a wastewater plant in, in full action. And anybody could go up there and tour it, which I did several times, and it was based on plants that were filtering and cleaning the water, and when it came out the other end, it, it looked crystal clear, and they were using it. So that was impressive, that was fifty-five years ago. So maybe it's money that's holding it up here, that was just two tiny little towns in Vermont, they weren't wealthy towns, so. And I know costs have changed, but I just wanted to share that thought, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Locke of the Harwich Conservation Trust was one of the first, um, folks who came to visit as, us as a committee. So, um, sort of implied and, and part of this, and he's been part of this, you know, the trust, the Harwich Conservation Trust has been through this and involved, and though it's certainly collaborative, it's not, you know, official, yes, I, to respond to that question, that has been considered, yes. And, yes, Mr. Locke has visited us several times, so. Other comments?
I just, I think it bears repeating, because it's hard to wrap your head around who we are and what we do, that we, we're just collecting all the data from the very beginning. We were fashioning this, as you said, it needed to be somewhat broad, and don't like the word vague, but it's true, because none of us can foretell the future. But we've tried as best we could to sort of envision what we think could happen. So some of what we've done is purposefully broad, because we have to leave openings. It's also, some of our language is, um, because we cannot mandate to the select board, we, as Joyce said, we serve at their pleasure, for as long as they want us to be a committee. At some point, we're disbanded, it won't be us who necessarily, for example, talks to other towns about climate. Um, not that we haven't considered it, and we have it in our plan, we're pointing to it, we're pointing the select board, the Board of Health, planning, zoning, any of the stakeholders, and the administration of the town who have to carry this out, we're pointing to specific ones for specific parts of the plan, but, um, we don't have any power, I guess is what I'm trying to say, except what you've given us.
Public sentiment, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just historically, you know, um, your point about the, the water over time, I remember, yeah, I grew up in town, and, um, uh, my family, longtime family business in Dennisport, and my grandfather saying, uh, you, this was like, you know, nineteen eighty-five, nineteen ninety, sewer will be thirty years, well, all of a sudden, that's, you know, forty-five years ago, right? And I heard somebody else say, again, uh, you know, sewer, thirty years, well, then all of a sudden, you're talking sixty or a hundred years, you know, and, and just in a discussion sense, we're trying to point the light here, that the clock is ticking in, in terms of, in terms of our environmental concerns, and our water, and our land use, and things like that. So the, the point is well-taken, when you're talking about nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty, you know, it's been batted around for a long time. There's something unique about the Cape, about not being able to, you know, imperfectly getting organized about that.
I remember when Shirley Gomes was a select person, and she was up at the dump, and we had a whole vat full of fish and aquatic plants, and they were doing some sort of pilot program on water.
Yeah. More, more of you that came, please, this is cordial, collegial, honest thoughts. If you all want to leave, you can leave, too. I'm going to beat you to it, we don't have to go.
We don't want to talk.
We don't have to go to seven, but I just want to make sure everyone has an opportunity, like, don't complain on the Harwich old timers if you didn't, if you didn't come, if you didn't come, and, and tell us what you think, eye to eye, this is a small town, you know?
But on Yelp.
And all of our meetings always have been and always are open meetings.
Open, welcome, recorded, welcome, everyone's welcome to participate. We're a fun group. Before we, yeah, Christine, please.
Could you just, um, give everyone an update related to next steps?
Sure. So, um, so, you know, we live in this incredibly vibrant, um, thoughtful, and yet imperfect community. So as I understand it, what, what, um, uh, so Christine has really expertly communicated to our regulatory boards that this is kind of a semi-official, it is the official, public comment period on the draft. Um, so that'll be sixty days, so that ends the end of September. Um, I tried to, you know, clarify with Ginny, and just on part of the public record, that your feedback is, like, really granular, is really important, so give it to us in writing, so that we can close the loop with the consultant, because I can't edit the document myself, nor could Christine, unless something changes. So we want to tell them when they're wrong about something like that, we've missed two libraries, you know, which we talk to them about, it kind of annoys me, so thank you for catching that. Um, catching it again. Um, uh, the process of this, that you all have educated me in, it needs to be approved, which Ed articulated, uh, by town meeting. Greater than us, there is not going to be a fall town meeting, so I would anticipate that this is, um, officially voted on in the spring town meeting. I think also covered in this discussion is that the process really matters. Richard really talked about, even though this isn't, quote, officially adopted, hey, something that's in it that's come from this discussion has happened. So it's not like you can't do any good, can only, you can't use the plan until, you know, May, that's not true. This is, this whole process is what makes it living and breathing and vital. Um, yes, do you want to articulate more? Yes.
Cape Cod Commission will be evaluating.
Yes, yes.
It's going to prove, uh, after the annual town meeting.
Okay, so it goes, so it's after the annual town meeting, and then it's, and in practice, in your experience, have you seen them tweaked a little bit? Like, the town approves it, and Cape Cod Commission says, eh, you got to do this, or what?
We remain aware that we have a final draft, and consider staff is, um, will evaluate it and provide comments.
Got it.
Sweet. So they'll look at it before the town meeting, though, which is.
So they won't say, oh, my God, you were so wrong about that, okay, good. It's in, in parallel, we've talked a lot about parallel, parallel processing here, yep.
So what happens since they're looking, reevaluating and looking at their regional policy plan, when we've been basing everything on old RPP?
Two more years.
Two more kids.
No, let Christine answer, let Christine answer.
No, we factored in, um, you know, Tyne Vaughn has, has looked at the two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan from the Cape Cod Commission, and has used updated information from the Regional Planning Agency as a guide to, to.
Cool.
For our, um, local conference.
But aren't they redoing something?
Yeah, they just asked for comment, the RPP.
That's correct. But, but we work with what we've already got, we can't work with something that's there.
My, my crystal ball is that we should worry about what happens locally, and, you know, see whatever feedback we can, we can hear. I don't think it's going to be an issue with the Cape Cod Commission.
Cool.
Hi, Elizabeth Harder, um, Harwich delegate, Marchville County Assembly of Delegates. Um, they are, the Cape Cod Commission is working on the new RPP, which will, which is on their website, the new draft is on the website. Um, as, what's been presented to us so far, um, is not that substantial. Um, tweaking of language, tweaking of zoning, reorganizing, um, where this goes in, you know, something that used to be under the communities, or, um, is now under, you know, infrastructure, or whatever. Um, but you can look at, at, on their website, but, um, so far, what I've seen is not, they're not doing major. It's, you know, there's nothing that all of a sudden, we're going to go, wait, what? We can't, we can't build anymore, you know? It's, it, it, um, it, you know, but if anything you're worried about, check.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Last call. With that, I'm, I will, just to kind of general next steps, I would anticipate, because we're in this public comment period, that the committee is going to meet again the second, it's the, it's the first Tuesday, and it's going to be the first day of school. It's the second, September second, um, to kind of dot our i's and cross our t's about this. It's always open, so we, you know, there may be more public, you know, more public comment is welcome, but to, like, close the loop in terms of where we are with the committee, um, regulatory committees, um, kind of dot all our i's, cross our t's. I know Barbara's going to Conservation Commission tomorrow, we're, we're invited to represent the committee, so, um, the tentative plan, of course, gone with change, or the tentative schedule would be that we're going to meet again in, uh, September, and then potentially take a hiatus as the parallel processing happens with the commission, and things like that. But we can always, would you agree, Christine, generally? Yeah?
Can I make a?
Please.
Committee comment?
Yes.
With regard to the executive summary?
Yes.
Could we add something that speaks to the prioritization in there?
We should, and that's, I, you know, hopefully, we're going to, we can cover some of that next. next meeting, too, but if you have specific feedback, I think included, and what's included to Christine, I would agree that the executive summary was not the strongest part of this document.
Thank you.
Yeah, yep, there is room for improvement there.
Okay.
Yes.
And if we are, because we are waiting until May of '26 to vote this at town meeting, do you anticipate sometime late winter, early spring, we might be having another community engagement or an invitation, even if it's carved in stone now and no more changes can be made?
I'm always open. I love to hear from everybody. We get into a little bit of contractual engagement of tie and bond, unless something changes, that we're able to edit this. What do you think, Christine?
For the editing, that would be a separate matter in terms of our contractual obligations that was indicated, but I do, to Barbara's point, I think it's, sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
The happy B section.
Thank you, Holly.
Yes.
It's not just you, Christine, it's all right.
But to Bernadette's point, you know, I do think it's important for us or for the committee to have another community engagement session.
Yeah, yeah.
Just as a reminder of how important the document is, but also we need as much support from the community, from the boarders, so if there is an opportunity, I think we should...
Yeah, of course, of course, of course.
Well, such a meeting, just because it's such a huge, dense document. Not everyone's going to read it, but if we had something, just giving, hitting the highlights a month or so before we go to town meeting, so that it's fresher in people's minds
Yeah, versus an eight-month hiatus.
Instead of on town meeting floor, and we're there till 1:00 in the morning, because we don't want that, or three nights of town meeting, not on us, anyway.
As long as we're into suggested activities, I think it would be good at some point in the fall to do select board, planning board with ourselves, like we did once before, so that we can get the select board to start, you know, start, I'm thinking of inhaling, but start to internalize, you know, digest, ingest, so.
We can talk more about that. We're kind of falling in line behind some professional staff recommendations, but yes.
Okay, but here's my thought. I'm going to play on to Richard's comment.
Yep.
We have an opportunity now to almost turn this into a living document, so that as things are being achieved, we present it that way when we go to the town meeting. So it's not six months old, but it's actually...
Yeah, it's been, you can use it all you want now. All the drafts are there, and I, and just to, just to clarify...
But it takes a select board.
Yeah, yeah, just to clarify, there are multiple sort of energies at play, so if, of course, if we had a magic wand and we had our druthers, we would love to have a town meeting in the end of October, approve this, you know, and do other things in town that we enjoy doing. But there are other forces at play, and we don't have a magic wand, and so this is, this is, I don't want to be reductive, but this is the timeline we understand right now, and it is perhaps different than all of our, as a committee's wishes, but that is what we've been doing.
I'm not trying to change the timeline.
No, I'm just kind of clarifying that.
I'm adding an activity into it.
Yeah, yeah.
That way, when we present it at the town meeting, we're already, we're there already using it.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yes, well, you know, we'll be taking the comment period for 60 days, and it would probably be good if we went in September in front of the planning boards and the select board for their comments. And then comes a period where, I don't know how it's going to work, but those are the updates to come up with literally a final draft, because at the end, at the, what is it, the second Friday in February, the article needs to be presented for approval of it, and it should be with, with literally a completed document, that we can then have one or more town meetings to explain it to everybody, so when people go to town meeting, they have some idea if they want to argue about it, they know what they're talking about, rather than, you know.
Now is the time to argue, is the point. Like, now is the time to talk about it.
A lot of times, you walk into town meeting, and you, this will have to be printed out in the warrant for everybody, all 150 pages.
225.
225 pages, and for the discussion of whether it's something they want to do or not, can't start there.
Correct. Now, so to, I agree with you, and now, as we've said, tell your friends, now is the time to talk about it, the next 60 days.
That was my point, Ed. It's like, it's going to be too late.
Yeah, now is, now is the time.
We've been here for three years.
And if we wanted a three-year commitment, we probably all should have run for select board.
Aren't we blessed? We are blessed to be here. With that, truly final, final call, and then we'll adjourn, just because I know someone else joined. Do you public, no? Okay, good. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate you. Welcome your feedback, anytime, always, in writing.
I move me adjourn.
Verbally. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No. And do we have any virtual participants? We don't, so we can just do it by voice. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?